Newfound snow, a different sky. A coffee cup to start the day. We packed a dream in our suitcase and flew so very far away. From distant shores we came to study, to build a skill, to lend a hand. We walk these streets, a hopeful journey in this promising white land. The classroom lights, the early shift. We give our best in all we do. We miss the homes we left behind us, but strive to make life brand new. And late at night we check the papers, a status held, a nervous prayer whispering in the quiet darkness. Will tomorrow find us here? Oh, we are more than temporary, more than a visa, date or form. We are the heart of a new morning, the quiet courage in the storm. And though the risks may try to shake us and tell us we must turn and go, the seeds of hope we've planted here are given time and room to grow. We've shared our songs, we've learned the rules, we've faced the winter sharp and deep. We've built a bridge of love and laughter and promises we long to keep. This maple leaf has seen our striving, it's watched us work and seen us change. We're not just passing through this season, we're not just names upon a page. Oh, we are more than temporary, more than a visa, date or form. We are the heart of a new morning, the quiet courage in the storm. And though the risks may try to shake us and tell us we must turn and go, the seeds of hope we've planted here are given time and room to grow. So let the headlines cause their worries, let the winds of doubt blow cold. Our spirit is a burning ember, a story waiting to be told. For temporary is a moment, but a future is a place and we will build it hand in hand with strength and dignity and grace. Oh, we are more than temporary, more than a visa, date or form. We are the heart of a new morning, the quiet courage in the storm. And though the risks may try to shake us and tell us we must turn and go, the seeds of hope we've planted here are given time and room to grow. Yes, the seeds of hope we've planted here will surely, surely grow. This is our home, our Canada. When the cool breeze of December sweeps across our land and the familiar carols echo in the palm of your hand, we remember seasons past, the laughter warm and bright, but we feel the heavy shadows of the long and troubled night. The whispers of the weak, the echoes of the loud. We stand amidst the chaos, a resilient faithful crowd. Yet even in the darkness, a simple star still shines, illuminating hope across these beautiful islands. Oh, let the lantern glow, dear friend, let the music start, for the true spirit of Christmas resides within the heart. The troubles may surround us, the burdens weigh us down, but the faith that binds our people is the greatest richest crown. We lift our voices higher for the child who brings the peace, knowing that the struggle will one day find relief. We are Filipinos enduring through the pain, sharing God's amazing grace again and yet again. The headlines tell the stories of disaster and of need, of broken promises and shattered, disappointed creed. But look into the eyes of a child who sees the light, whose innocence reminds us to keep our values right. We gather around the table, though the food may be too few. Our love is the abundance that sees our hope and through. From every province scattered, from every distant shore, we pray for better mornings than the one we had before. This is the special magic that defines our Christmas days, finding perfect joy and meaning in a hundred simple ways. It's the comfort of a neighbor, the strength of the community, the gentle quiet courage of unwavering unity. We hold the hands that labor, that rebuild what has been lost, understanding that true freedom comes at such a heavy cost. Oh, let the lantern glow, dear friend, let the music start, for the true spirit of Christmas resides within the heart. The troubles may surround us, the burdens weigh us down, but the faith that binds our people is the greatest richest crown. We lift our voices higher for the child who brings the peace, knowing that the struggle will one day find relief. We are Filipinos enduring through the pain, sharing God's amazing grace again and yet again. So hold on to that feeling, let your worries softly cease. Believe in our tomorrow, believe in lasting peace. A merry merry Christmas, Philippines our home so true. May the hope we sing about sustain me and sustain you. May the light sustain us all.
Philippine Ambassador to Canada His Excellency Jose Victor V. Chan. Please remain standing for the singing of the Canadian and Philippine national anthem, followed by land acknowledgement led by Ms. Marjorie Newman. Oh Canada, our home and native land. True nature love in all thy sons and women. With loving hearts we see thee as the true Lord strong and free. From God and mine, oh Canada, we stand ungodly. God give our head, glory us and free. Oh Canada, we stand ungodly. Oh Canada, we stand ungodly. This land has been welcoming guests for tens of thousands of years. We wish to thank the indigenous peoples of 36 territory, the Cree, Blackfoot, Métis, Nahutasi, Iroquois, Dene, Anishinaabe, Indian and many others. We are indebted to their grace, hospitality and sacrifice and for the weaving of the rich fabric of histories, languages and cultures of this place. May we fall in love with this land, continue the grace we have received for all peoples and celebrate the unity that grows out of our diversity. Ang lupain na ito ay malugot na tumatanggap ng mga bisita sa nagdaan ng libo-libong taon. Aming pinasasalamatan ang mga katutumbong tao dito sa 36 territory, the Cree, Blackfoot, Métis, Nahutasi, Iroquois, Dene, Anishinaabe, Indian at maraming pang-iba. Tinatanaw namin na malaking utang na loob sa kanila sa mga biyaya, kabutihang loob at sakripisyo na ibinigay at inaalay nila para sa atin. Higit sa lahat, kinikilala namin ang ginawa nila sa paghabi ng ibla ng kasaysayan, mga wika at kultura ng lugar na ito. Sana ay patuluy nating mahalin ang lupain na ito, pangalagaan ang mga biyaya na tinatamasan natin at ipagdiwang ang pagiging isa mula sa ating pagkakaiba-iba. To open our gathering with gratitude, we now call on Father Nilo Makapiglak to lead us in a prayer.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Blessed are you, Lord God of all creation, for your goodness you gathered us today together with our beloved ambassador, our diplomats, our consul general, vice consul, and all the civic, religious, cultural organizations gathered here at this town hall gathering. Bless our fellowship, our gathering and friendship together. Bless our country, the Philippines, heal our land. Restore it with integrity, justice, and peace. That bright future may flourish brighter than the sun of the daylight. Restore your blessings among all of us today in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Marito kitima kinawina. Jesus, kitima kinawina. High five. God bless.
Thank you, Father Nilo. Please be seated. To officially welcome us to this gathering, it is my honor to introduce our first distinguished guests for tonight. She assumed her post as Consul General of the Philippine consulate General in Canada with jurisdiction over the provinces of Alberta and Saskatchewan. On the 20th of June 2024, prior to this post, she served as Minister and Consul General of the Philippine Embassy in Phnom Penh, Cambodia from May 2021 to June 2024. She was posted at the Philippine Embassy in London, United Kingdom from 2012 to 2019 and served as the alternate permanent representative of the Philippines to the International Maritime Organization in London during that period. She was first posted to the Philippine Mission to the United Nations in New York from 2004 to 2010, where she handled the Six Committee and Philippine Initiatives in the U.N. General Assembly such as the Resolutions on Oceans, Fisheries and Interfaith Dialogue and Cooperation for Peace and Development. She was also the alternate permanent representative of the Philippines during its term at the U.S. Security Council from 2004 to 2005. She served in various capacities in the Department of Foreign Affairs, most recently as Director of the Social Cultural Division of UNIO. And prior to that, as Director for Southeast Asian or Southeast Asia, she covers Brunei, Indonesia, Malaysia, Myanmar, Singapore and Vietnam of the Office for Asia and Pacific Affairs. She is married with two children. Please help me welcome Honorable Emma R. Sanier.
Marami sa malaki. Pasensya na po ang ngumok kong boses. Nagkaraoke po kasi. Ay, hindi pa lang. But salud-salud lang po na meetings. Father Nilo, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished leaders of the Filipino community in Edmonton, friends and partners, magandang gabi po sa inyong lahat. Magandang gabi po. It is indeed my honor to welcome all of you to this gathering and it is a meaningful moment because we are joined by someone who shares that same deep commitment to serving and uplifting the global Filipino community. It is my privilege to introduce you to the new Ambassador, the Republic of the Philippines to Canada, His Excellency Jose Victor Chan Gonzaga. Round of applause, please. Ambassador Jose Victor Chan Gonzaga is a career diplomat and a lawyer with over 25 years of service in the Philippine Department of Foreign Affairs. Ambassador Chan Gonzaga has held key positions in both bilateral and multilateral postings, including as Consul General and Minister for Economic Affairs at the Philippine Embassy in Washington DC and as Chargé de Affairs and First Secretary at the Philippine Permanent Mission to the World Trade Organization in Geneva. At the Department of Foreign Affairs in Manila, he served as Assistant Secretary of the Office of American Affairs, which is why he knows so much already about Canada because he has been serving on the Manila side as our Assistant Secretary for American Affairs, which covers Canada. He also served as Executive Director and Director for Treaties, specifically economic and socio-cultural treaties of the DFA's Office of Legal Affairs. And he was also the Director for Social Development Issues and Human Rights and Economic Finance, Agriculture, DCDC and IP matters of the Office of the United Nations and other international organizations. Pasensya na po kayo. Ang DFA po mahilig talaga sa mga mahahabang names ng mga offices po, no? In these various capacities, he played a pivotal role in strengthening key bilateral ties in the Americas, advancing Philippine interests in international treaty negotiations and developing legal policy in diplomacy. He holds a Master's in Law degree with concentration in international law from Columbia Law School in New York, where he was a Fulbright Fellow and a Brett S. Felder International Law Fellow. He also holds a U.S. Doctorate degree from Atenea de Manila School of Law and a Bachelor of Arts in interdisciplinary studies also from the same university, Atenea de Manila University. Actually, makasama po sila ni Vic, mga tubong at tinista po itong dalawang kasama natin in front, mga Jesuit train. Ambassador Gonzaga brings to Canada not only an impressive diplomatic career but also a clear dedication to strengthening Philippine-Canada relations across many fronts: economic cooperation, cultural exchange, people-to-people bridges, and above all, the welfare and advancement of Filipinos in every province and territory. He has expressed great interest in listening to our communities, supporting our aspirations and ensuring that the voice of the Filipino in Canada is heard and valued. And at this point, Mr. Ambassador, I hope you wouldn't mind, I would like to recognize and introduce to you the Filipino organizations who are represented here tonight. First, siyempre, alitwa, alfabetikal. Oo, wala, 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 ano ah, alfabetikal ito. Wala, walang ganitan, walang ano. First, we have, mukita ko siya ngayon na dito eh, Alberta Filipino Journal. Where are you? Alberta Filipino Journal. And of course, we have Biscayne na Pangasinan. Biscayne, where are you? There they are. Thank you, St. The Congress of the Philippine Associations of Alberta, COPA. I was just with you last, last second. There you are, there you go. And of course, we have the Camilling Society of Edmonton. At Edmonton, asan na yon? There they are. We have the Edmonton Philippine International Center. I think I saw them as well. There they are. The Edmonton Boholano Cultural Association. At Opo. We also have, siyempre, kung meron bohola, no? Meron din tayong Edmonton Ilukano Association of Canada. Ilukano, may Camilling pa. And of course, hindi po natin kakalimutan Filipino retirees association in Alberta. Yes, yata sila bateryan. And the Filipino-Canadian Association of Leto. Nasan na yon Leto, Lucy? Yata mo rin kasi Lucy, masihi din mo it. We have the Filipino-Canadian Trade Expo and Mission. There they are, Edmonton Center. And of course, ang ating nagwawagayway ng Filipino language teaching dito sa Edmonton. We have the Filipino Academic and Cultural Educators Society, or FACES. Where are you, girls? There you are. And of course, kasama ng FACES, we have the Filipino-Canadian Saranay Association of Alberta. Miss Josie. And of course, hindi lang tayo pwedeng magkaroon ng isang seniors association, meron din tayong Filipino Senior Citizens Association. Kapos, sinabi na tayo, mukha mo ng karera ngayon. Iba 'yung retirees, iba 'yung mga seniors. And of course, we also have the Humanitarians of Edmonton Association lending true service or hearts. There they are. Yan, mukha mo na kayo ng mga ilang puso. And of course, we also have the Jesus's Board Church. Well, represented, the Karilagan Dance Society. Sa mga sasayang, sila na yon. We have the Multicultural Health Brokers Cooperative. Brokers na sa kayo. There they are. Sila kayo with them at the entrance. The Nasipitons, Nasipitons of Edmonton Association. The regional organizations natin. The Obuwanon Sebu Heritage Foundation. There you go. Walang isang ano ba mga taga Sebu. Kapano na ba nasasabihin ng Philippine Business Society of Alberta? What about you guys? And Philippine Media Association of Alberta? Where are you? The Philippine Media Association na sa Alberta? Oo, diyan sila. Si Doob De Doop. May pa pare-pare yun, ano. And dun din sila, pare-pare hu 'yung ano nila, organization sila. Of course, we could not forget the Philippine Arts Council. Philippine Arts Council. And then I would like to mention that ito pong Philippine Arts Council, sila po 'yung nagestablish nung mapping, 'yung cultural mapping po. With the help of the consulate, we endorsed a new project for mapping 'yung different cultural organizations in and around Edmonton. And it's a very, very, very wonderful tool to learn where these cultures are, cultural organizations are in Edmonton. It is highlighted in our website. We also have the Spruce Grove Stony Plain Filipino-Canadian Association. Spruce Grove. There they are. We have the Saint Gabriel Parish at Abasca, Alberta. And of course, kung meron tayong Saint Gabriel, meron tayong Saint Vitao, Saint Vital Parish. May Father, minas may Father Nilo. The Association, ito netorti siya, kaya medyo ba nagdugo niya. The Association of Batanggenios in Alberta. We also have representatives from the Alberta Chronicle. Alberta Chronicle. The Philippine Artists Guild in Edmonton. The Association of Friendly Filipino Canadians in Edmonton. Meron ba tayong namfriend? Yeah, sige, nasan ito. Association of Friendly Filipino Canadians in Edmonton. Sure yourselves, sa sa kayo. It's supposed to be friendly. And of course, we also have United Ikolanos of Alberta and Friends. Ang malaking-malaking Vispin Association. But the Vispin Association Ambassador, they are the ones who hold the largest Sinulog Festival po. So, kayo na po kasag-sagay ng ngayon. Let's, let's nakahanap itan ng Vispin, Vitao in Edmonton. And then, of course, ang Tribo Le Do. That's the Tribo Le Do. Tribo Le Do, you know na tribo le do. And of course, siyempre, hindi natin kakalimutan ang partner organizer po in this evening's festivity, ang Yacap Alberta Foundation and the Philippines. And it's Yacap with you for doing this. So ladies and gentlemen, we are fortunate to have an ambassador whose vision aligns with the energy and momentum of Alberta's Filipino community, now one of the most dynamic and influential Filipino populations in Canada. So as we continue to contribute to this province's workforce, business sector, cultural landscape and civic life, we are confident that we here in Alberta now have landscape, and civic life, we are confident that we here in Alberta now have a steadfast champion in Ottawa. And pasensya na po, meron po yata ako nakalimutan, of course, si Mario, nandyan, ikakita ko nga. Yung tasky win, Filipino community. Tasky win po, tasky win. Wala rin, wala rin lang po yun dito sa Edmonton, apologies, Mario. And then, of course, we also have the Alberta Filipino Charter School. And this is an important, uh, Filipino Charter School. We, we, they, they would want to have a Charter School established po dito in Edmonton that would teach the Filipino language. So, hindi lang po ito parang, uh, uh, language class, but the idea here is to establish a charter school. And I understand that they are making very big headway in that area. And, uh, all right, that's it. So, I guess I have no other job but to ask everyone with your warmest Edmonton welcome, please join me in receiving His Excellency Jose Victor Chan Gonzaga, Ambassador.
Thank you so much, Conjan. And magandang gabi po sa ating lahat. Good evening. I'm, I'm so happy to be here with you. And I hope you'll allow me to say a few words. I know the food smells, smells great, but if you, if you'll allow me to say a few words tonight, just, I guess, to introduce myself and to talk a little bit about how I view our, my tenure here in, in, in Canada in the next couple of, of years. So, thank you so much for joining us this evening. I know it's very cold outside, although I think it's colder in Calgary, supposedly because of the snow, and it definitely is colder in, in Ottawa tonight. So, again, magandang gabi po sa ating lahat. It is truly a pleasure to be with you this evening, and I thank Conjan Emma and her team in the Consulate General, and of course, our local partners whom she recognized tonight for organizing this event. I couldn't be happier than to be, than to spend this evening with you. It's been a long day for us. It had been meeting after meeting with ministers, including the Premier and the Mayor of Edmonton. But this was the event that I was truly looking forward to today. So, mga kababayan, we have heard time and again that Filipinos can be found almost everywhere in the world. One may visit the northernmost capital of the world, Reyjabik in Iceland, or the southernmost capital of the world, Wellington in New Zealand, the country of Fiji in the Pacific, the island of Diego Garcia in the Indian Ocean, or St. Kitzinemis in the Caribbean, and one will surely find a Filipino. In one of my earliest travels for the Philippine Foreign Service, I went to this place called Namibia, which at the time was a newly independent country, but we already found a community of sisters, Father Nilo, there are a community of sisters there, running the, the hospital in, in the capital, Vinto, in Namibia. So, surely we'll find Filipinos everywhere, and I believe even in Yukon, I understand, a place that is so much different from the Philippines, one can find a significant number of Filipinos. So, I would just share with you that one promise I have made to a couple of members of parliament who have urged me to do so is really to make it a point to visit some of the northernmost provinces and territories in which there are Filipinos. I am told by many members of parliament that there have, there are a lot of villages, towns, and cities in the north that were slowly dying just because of, it was so, it was so rural, it was so far away from, from civilization, but the Filipinos, with our faith, with our music, with our parties, brought life back to, into these cities and villages. And I look forward to visiting some of our kababayan up there. So, it is not surprising to discover that Filipinos have been in Canada long before the embassy and the consulates were established. In a census reported dating back to 1901, Filipinos in Canada were identified as laborers, fishermen, and ranchers. Today, as the Conjan alluded to, almost a million Filipinos in Canada, more than 200,000 who have found their second home in Alberta, have been enriching the diversity and have contributed and continue to contribute to the advancement of this country. So, the diaspora here in Canada is the second largest anywhere in the world, second only to the one in the United States. And the diaspora here in Alberta is the second largest here in Canada, second only to Canada. And I think through you, through all of you, through your friendships, through your work in your classrooms, in your hospitals, in the churches that you lead, you have conveyed to Canadians and to Canada the image of a people who are, who we should be proud of, a people who have empathy, a people who have hard, who work hard, and a people who are resilient. And this is something that I kept hearing today from one minister to another, just the high praises that they have for the community here in Canada and for the work that you do each and every day of your lives here in this country. We refer to groups of Filipinos overseas as the Filipino community, concerned with the well-being of others, willing to speak and act for the benefit of other people, embodying the spirit of bayanihan. It is in this spirit that I am here today together with your Consulate Generals to reaffirm the commitment of the Embassy in Ottawa and the Philippine Consulate General in Calgary to deliver services more efficiently and effectively, and to be your partners in promoting and protecting your welfare and interests. What I want us to be at the end of the day is for the Philippine Embassy and for the Consulate General in Calgary and for all our Consulate Generals in, in Canada for that matter, to be your home away from home. This is one of my priorities as I begin my tenure in Canada. This is a priority I have emphasized to all the members of the Philippine team here in Canada, that I want kababayan, like yourselves, to see the Embassy and the Consulates General across Canada as your safe, warm, and happy space in this country. So, you all have a standing invitation to visit the Embassy in Ottawa. If you are in Ottawa one of these days, please do come and say hello to us. I want you, I want you to look at the Embassy and the Consulate General not just as a place. Obviously, it's important, it's one of our key mandates, as a place to go to to renew your passports, to get your visas, to have your documents consularized or legalized for that matter. Yes, we're always gonna be there for you for, for those things. But as I said, I want us to be your second home, I want us to be your safe and happy places. So, please, even if you're not renewing your passport, please do come and say hello, and you will always be welcome in your Embassy, in your Consulate General. One area of cooperation between the Embassy and the Filipino community in Canada is to achieve credentials recognition. This was one of the important themes of our conversation this, the whole day today with the Premier of Alberta, with the Speaker of the Alberta Legislative Assembly, and with all of the ministers whom we met today. Because as early as the 1960s, Filipino professionals have been in Canada, teachers, nurses, engineers, and doctors, among others. They are recognized and regarded as professionals in this country, and we can do it again. Credentials recognition will open opportunities for our kababayan to be eligible of high-paying jobs and the 40% of Filipinos have a bachelor's degree to be part of industries which require a bachelor's degree. I have emphasized to the federal government as well as to the government of Alberta today that it is only fair and it is only just that Filipino professionals who come to this country to work should be recognized for who they are, for what they are, for what they trained for, for what they did. Obviously, this would not be an easy feat, but it can be achieved because Filipinos are known for their work ethics, and that's something that was reiterated to us all day long. We have always driven for excellence, we are motivated, and we persevere to achieve, not only to achieve our personal goals, but also to ensure the success of our respective organizations and institutions. So, we work despite challenges and keep a positive attitude against all odds. A great example of this are the Filipino nurses, who were highly regarded around the world for saving lives and for continuing to serve even at the height of the pandemic that no one understood in the very beginning. So, let us build a community that has more Antonio Flores, more Jerika Inkoy, more Lieutenant Colonel Joseph Nunato, or more MP Retchy Valdez in its midst, who can help echo and represent our community's interests both at the provincial and federal levels. So, let's work towards that particular objective. I would also like to acknowledge the growing and impressive presence of Filipino business owners here in Edmonton. And this is something that our Consulate General emphasized in our many meetings today, including with your newly-elected mayor of Edmonton. Your enterprises contribute significantly to the local economy while preserving and promoting Philippine culture. So, in this regard, I would continue to encourage our Filipino entrepreneurs to continue championing and showcasing Philippine-made products, from food and beverage to handicrafts and, and fashion. And by supporting and promoting Filipino products, you not only strengthen our MSMEs back home, but also help introduce the richness and diversity of Philippine craftsmanship to the wider Canadian market. And in doing so, you become vital partners in advancing Philippine trade, culture, and economic diplomacy. I would just share that since I arrived in Ottawa, in the early, in the late summer, early autumn, what I have been given as a token in all my introductory calls, as well as to the ministers today whom we met, are hand-woven products from the Ilocos region, all of them are familiar with the Inabel textile and fabric. So, that, that is something, that is a story that we, we try to, 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 to convey to all those whom we've met over the course of the last few years, and then we're thinking about what to feature for, for the next year. So, mga kababayan, your contributions to Edmonton and to Canadian society are deeply valued, from healthcare and education to trades, entrepreneurship, public service, and creative industries. At the same time, you proudly carry forward Filipino values such as the bayanihan, resilience, and respect, strengthening the positive image of the Philippines abroad. Edmonton has long been recognized as home to one of the most engaged and dynamic Filipino communities in Canada, and I say that tonight. Your strong presence is matched by your remarkable participation in community activities. And again, I want you to know, and I'm sure you know, that this is something that is not taken for granted by your premier here, by your, by the politicians, by the mayor whom we met this afternoon. And this is something that they acknowledge, and this is something that they consider to be valuable in enriching Canadian society. So, this participation of yours in community activities is especially evident in your unwavering support, and if you could allow me this plug, for the Winter Estape, where Edmonton has consistently recorded, what I understand, the highest number of participants year after year. Showing your commitment to coming together as one community even during the coldest months of the year. So, it is my hope that you join us again together with your friends and family next year, that's February 1 to 10, 2026, we will go to Manila, to Ciquor, to Dumaguete, and to the Gicol region. And speaking of numbers, I would also like to take this opportunity to inform you that we shall soon resume the overseas voting registration process on the 1st of December 2025 for the 2028 national elections. I hope that Filipinos in Edmonton will register a high turnout of registered voters and even a higher number of votes come 2028. Please, continue to be responsible and involve citizens of the Philippines, I guess this is really more with the dual citizens, while being productive and law-abiding migrants in Canada. Just a few more thoughts. One is that we should all aspire, and I always say that you are our best ambassadors overseas, whether in Canada or elsewhere. Let us continue to build a Filipino-Canadian community that is inclusive, empowered, and united in purpose. But at the same time, I hope also that you will make sure that, I know there are problems back home, there's probably a different time to, to talk about those problems. I am not minimizing at all the importance of these issues that I know everyone is reading about, talking about. But having recognized that, I just want to make, emphasize a couple of points. One is let's just be sure that our information is accurate. There's a whole lot of misinformation and disinformation out there. I know we get a lot of our news today from social media, and you need to be discerning, you need to be critical in thinking about what you read actually in all of this. So, please, please be sure that the information you are, you act on, the information you express your opinions on are accurate and, and not misinformation and disinformation. But having said that also, really, again, I'm not trying to minimize the problems that we need to tackle, that we need to address, which the President is doing, but I always emphasize this to Filipinos overseas. There is a whole lot of other positive things to be happy and to be proud about and to talk about. So, I hope that equally, we are also passionate about telling our kababayan, telling our neighbors, telling the people we work with, telling our friends about what's good, what's positive in the country today. Convey an image of a country that is modern, that is dynamic, that is inclusive, and a country really that still shares a lot of values with Canada. The values of the importance of the individual, the values of democracy, the values of human rights, the values of freedom. Yes, we have challenges in those areas, but I would like to believe, and I hope that you continue to socialize this, that Filipinos, your kababayan back home, there's a whole lot of positive things to talk about. Please, let's talk about those things first before we talk about the negative things, which again, I'm not trying to be defensive here, I'm not trying to minimize those things, but I'm just saying that if we can express our opinions on some of the things that we should be outraged about, we should also equally be able to with the same passion, express our opinions, express our pride for what we can be proud and happy about our country and about our people. And the other thing as ambassadors is our children. Please, I know it's, it's easier said than done, but please, let's make sure that our children continue to know who they are, to have that identity, to realize their history, their heritage, their culture, their faith. As I said, the diaspora in Canada is growing, is the second largest now in the world. What we want to avoid is to have that missing generation in some of the other places, including your neighbor down south, that missing generation of kids who did not feel rooted, who did not identify with the Philippines, who had no inkling about their culture, about their history, and about their heritage. I'm happy that's changing now. Many Filipino-Americans, second, third generation, are increasingly wanting to learn more about themselves. But let's not have that with our kids here in Canada. Let's make sure that they continue to know where you guys came from, the hardship that you've done in order to give them a better life here, and more importantly, to be proud of their culture, of their history, of their heritage, to be proud of being Filipino. And this is something I emphasize to our friends in, in Canada, that please do not expect Filipinos to become just full-fledged Canadians. Yes, assimilate, be part of society, but at the end of the day, continue to be Filipino, continue to be distinct, continue to be different, because only in that way will you actually help in contributing to the diversity and the richness of Canadian society. So, and there's no substitute for making sure our children So, and there's no substitute for making sure our children continue to be rooted, and I'm happy to hear about the project with respect to the Filipino Charter School. I'm happy about the Philippine Arts Society in Edmonton and in Alberta. I think it will need this whole village of ours to make sure that our children continue to be proud of their heritage. And finally, Gonjan Emma mentioned this. I want to hear your stories. I always look forward to meeting the Filipino community, whether here in Canada or in the Caribbean, for example, in my past life as Consul General based in Washington DC. Because it's only in knowing your stories can we really be better representatives of yours here, whether in Calgary, in Edmonton, or in Ottawa. So, I hope that tonight, in the little time that we'll be here together, I hope that I'll be able to speak to as many of you as possible to hear your stories. Because that's important to me, and that's important to your representatives, to your diplomats all across Canada. And finally, I would just say that in this age of Zoom, if there's any project, anything, any initiative, or equally any concern that you think I should know, please work with Gonjan Emma and we can all have a Zoom discussion. And that's what I always emphasize to our team here in Canada, that we need to break the barriers between us and you. We need to break those barriers that sometimes it is there. Again, there is no better way of doing that but by starting from the proposition that one of our main objectives in the near future is to make sure that the embassy and the Consulates General all across Canada will be your home away from home. It will be your safe, happy place here in cold, wintry, true north. Thank you so much. I look forward to the dinner and the discussion.
Thank you very much Ambassador Chan for sharing your vision and plans for improving and supporting Filipinos here in Canada. Once again, let's give a big round of applause, ladies and gentlemen, to Ambassador Huseb Victor Chan Gonzaga. Thank you so much. And of course, this time for the second part of our program, we celebrate the rich culinary contributions of our kababayans. We proudly showcase local Filipino food businesses from Edmonton and nearby cities. Entrepreneurs who bring the taste of home to our community here in Alberta. At this point, I'm sure everyone is excited to try the dishes prepared by our very own Filipino businesses. May I invite our dear Ambassador Huseb Victor, Consul General Emma, and DC Jubin to grace the foods served by our Filipino-Canadian entrepreneurs? All right, now I think they may now have their way to our buffet area at the back. All right, and of course, while our distinguished guests grace us the food, a buffet has been arranged on both sides of the hill, and our ushers will be on hand to assist everyone to enjoy the dinner. In the meantime, please watch our live streaming here in our lap ball from Events Place Bausa by Soundcheck Production. Thank you so much. All right, once again, we would like to inform everybody the double A has been arranged on both sides of the hill. So right now, please feel free to stand and grab your foods, guys. We have it at this side and we have it on this side. Thank you so much. And also, we would like to remind everybody to please bring your plates with you guys as you head to our buffet area. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Yeline Santos Wong.
And Andrei Simuong.
And we own Yellot Ice Cream and Bake Shop here in Edmonton. We started in June of twenty eighteen, and we primarily create Filipino and Asian-inspired ice cream and baked goods.
And we also bring Baraco coffee back from the Philippines green and get it roasted locally, and it's always a highlight here in the shop.
We make all of our ice cream from scratch right here.
That's right, and our baked goods from scratch right here. And we won the best cookie in the city by CBC Radio, the Snack Checker at one point. And we just won an award recently. We got an email about being the number one ice cream shop in northern Alberta.
Hi, my name is Res. He's on. I'm the owner of Flipside BBQ. We've been running the truck for like three years. Business, I've been running it for four years. You can actually catch us in big events, like usually big events like K Days, Fringe, Big Valley Jamboree.
I am Sustay Nissesito from Tapos. And ang start 'yung business namin suru marketplace, and then maraming kami narisi ka masti ping pak. So, tagarang kami ng lakas ng loob na pat-ado ng putrak na Tapos, specializing takuyati. So, hinahanap pa rin 'yung product tawag ng Whiskler, so hindi naman ako mapopareng draft ng Whiter. So, lucky side na namang kami magta-tentam toyis si Wusawes in Edmonton Wood. And luckily, at tawin na rin suw support sa akin. Excited na namang iilatch ang babog baby namin na Putrak Sabang Putrak.
So, nung pandemic, we bought, me and my husband, La Se Job. So because of parehas kaming one trabaho, and then I have this business for a long time. So we concentrate and we gamble na magpatayo na sariling commercial kitchen. And then the competition is high on that tank, kasi everyone, lahat sila nagbi-bake, even though walang permit. But sabi nga nila, kung kasabihan, if you cannot beat them, join them. So nung pa after nung pandemic, nawala na lahat, and then we're still here.
So I'm Sharon Bernabe po, owner ng Authentic Chicharon in Baguette of Pampanga. Bali, nagsimula po 'yung Authentic Chicharon is nung pandemic. Simula lang po kami sa halagang fifty dollars na puhunan, and then nagtry kami ng ilang pack. Tapos, nabigla na lang po kami is parami na ng parami 'yung po-order, and then nakita ng mga tao na masarap pala 'yung Authentic Chicharon. Dinagdagan na po namin ng ibang products. And then, thanks God, kasi sa ngayon po, marami na pong nadagdag na products. Meron na rin kaming belitson, 'yung po 'yung mga seasonal products namin, belitson, mga inasal, barbecue lembo, and meron din po kaming chicken skin.
Yarekuliyan ng Yente, ang gupayis po namin is na dito sa Lido, Alberta. 'Yung business po namin, ta nagranan ng for almost three years, meron din po kami food truck na nakikita sa Edmonton and nearby cities.
Ah, my name is Roger Reyes, the owner of Chow Keni Restaurant and Catering Services. Actually, we have three branches na po dito sa Alberta. One is Spruce Group, Chow Keni West, and Chow Keni South. And we proudly to say na, ang pintuan po ng Chow Keni ay bukas para sa komunidad ng Pilipino sa bawat pagtulong. Maraming-maraming salamat po.
My name is Disa Jane Mabailan, and I am the founder and CEO of Exatto Kind and DJ Huddle, of course. And we have a manufacturing plant new in Manitoba, which is, that's our main base now. And we have also distribute all over Canada, and Subis, and Superstore, Sun, and also, of course, our Filipino stores and local stores.
Hi, my name is Mayan Kadalo, and I'm the owner of Sugba by Food Delicious. We do have a buffet here every Sunday and every Friday dinnertime. I'm also the owner of Food Delicious in Melbourne Market Mall, and we offer full catering services there.
Hi, I'm Randall Colgan.
And my name is Rio Colgan. We are the owner of Bingis Grill Foods.
Yes, and some examples of some of our customers are Italian Center, Soviets, Loca, Lucky Ninety Seven, TNT Supermarket, and farmers markets throughout the city. And we're hoping to stay within Canada.
Hi, I'm Helda, and I'm the owner of Flubi Por Truck. We serve refreshing milk peas, fruit peas, fresh lemonade, smoothies, slushies, and other Latino treats, such as halo halos, conielos, and leche francesca.
Hi, my name is Eric Baiko. I'm the owner of the Chicken House and Catering at Wright Avenue. I've been running this business for three years now, and I'm excited to announce the new opening of the Chicken House West soon. We are popular on serving inasal, bat choy, and bal bakwa.
Hi, my name is Amirun Abir, the owner of Pare Ricas Kitchen in Lido, can also have two grocery store at Brenneray Mart in Edmonton and Brenneray Mart Lido. It's been, Brenneray Mart, it's been eighteen years in the business.
Hi, I'm Clarissa, owner of Saikaya Roast Sushi. Owning a restaurant has always been more than a business to me. It's a calling and a blessing that God has placed in our hands. We serve our customer with a grateful heart even when unexpected challenges arise. We choose to face them with a notion.
Sa larangan ng restaurant, inaangkop namin ang negosyo na panlasa ng mga customer sa pamamagitan ng pagalam namin ng mga putahe patok na panlasa sa mga tao. Inaalam din namin ang hilig ng mga bagong henerasyon at patuloy na ina-upgrade at ini-improve namin ang mga pagkain at serbisyo na ino-opera namin para masaya ang mga customer namin.
Ang pinakamahalagang aral na natutunan namin sa pagne-negosyo ay kailangan malakasang loob mo para sa mga darating na pagsubok, kasi hindi araw-araw ay malakasang negosyo. At kailangan tuloy-tuloy lang kung ano 'yung naumpisahan mo, at iisipin mo lagi kung bakit ka nagumpisa ng negosyo niyan.
And along the way naman, kailangan maging matyaga ka, tapos 'yung consistency kailangan nandun lagi, lalo na sa product mo, tsaka sa service.
Hi, my name is Michael. I'm the store manager of Seaboot City at Mette. Seaboot City has been in business for over twenty-five years. Here on Seaboot City, we bring labor and cloth close circle our community.
Charter School! Ayon, picture ni kita yon! The first bilingual charter school, of course, built by Filipinos. Ayon, sige! Okay, and of course, we'd like to inform everybody that this coming Sunday, erong di ngayon Sunday po ya, November thirty at, we do have Zumba na for a cause. Salat po ng mga gusto mong pumunta, makisayaw, kasama ang ating banda, siyempre makisayaw, kasama ang ating mga Zumba, isang sampal nga sa KLR. Ayon! Salat ang ating mga Zumba instructors, pwede-pwede po ngayon pumunta this coming Sunday, two PM, November thirty, at Events Place by Soundcheck Production, okay? Malaking tulong po din. It's a charity event para sa lahat po ng mga nasalanta ng Baguio sa Cebu. Ayon, most especially sa Visayas region. Ayon. Again, inimitahan po namin ngayon, November thirty, two PM, Zumba na! Makisayaw po nayo, kasama. Anong oras po? Is it, is it two PM? It's two PM. We will start two PM onwards. Ayon. 'Yung ating Zumba po will start at four PM, okay? Salat po ng mga gusto mong tumalog, makisayaw, nakisayaw, pwede-pwede po ngayon pumunta. Oh, tanong na rin sa'yo nilang 'yung dike na atin, ano mo?